All right, I'm going to call the special meeting for June 11, 2013 of the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protemp Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatch?
Here.
Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Clapp are not present at the moment.
Okay, the purpose of this special meeting is a workshop with regard to our fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just to remind everybody, what we're doing with these budget workshops is really gathering information and hearing from the city council about their various budget priorities. This isn't the time and place where we'll actually make final decisions on the budget. That'll be when we adopt the budget on the 25th. But today and at the budget hearing as part of the regular council meeting, it'll be real important to hear what things are out there that we need to address when we do adopt the budget. So we're taking up where we left off two weeks ago, and the first item up is the Historic Preservation Commission. And we do have a representative of the commission here to address you, as well as some correspondents about their budget requests.
Where are we in the budget manual?
So the HPC is on page 131.
Were you given these handouts?
Yes, we were.
You were, okay, good.
All right, Madam Chair, welcome.
Thank you, welcome councilmembers and staff and the public. I would just like to say I really appreciate from myself and the HPC your support of historic preservation and your openness to explore the different possibilities for historic preservation in the city of Ojai. It's very meaningful to us, and we're moving forward with that. So thank you. Our funding request is actually pretty simple for the fiscal year. The first item would be $1,960 for training, and that would be for conferences and workshops and field trips for the HPC. We had a really great field trip in January to the Los Angeles Department of Historic Resources, and we met with the director there, and we learned so much. And they gave us brochures, and they gave us a tour of downtown City Hall, and told us how much work that Los Angeles has done with historic preservation. And I do believe that we also provided your membership with brochures, and their brochures were just fantastic. So that was a good resource, and we would like to be able to continue to do that. We have a tentative field trip planned in August with the Pasadena Heritage Organization to do a walking tour of Pasadena's historic sites and meet with them. So we're really excited about that. There are also quite a few sponsored historic preservation conferences throughout California and Los Angeles, Pasadena, those areas that are of interest to our members, and our members have expressed interest to attend. So we would like to do that in the coming year. So that is that line item. Are there any questions? Okay.
Any questions? Ms. Juline? No.
The second item on our budget request is landmark plaques for $1,200. You may recall that in the last fiscal budget, the allocation from the public for the plaque fee was taken out. So where we used to use the applicant's plaque fee to fund the actual plaque, we don't have any money for that. So we're asking for $1,200 for future plaques to fund that. And our last request is $1,200 for printing informational brochures and handouts. Again, the handouts we received from the Los Angeles Historic Resources Department were fantastic. They did speak to Los Angeles in particular. Some of them, you know, were more broad. But what we'd like to do is we'd really like to create our own brochures and handouts for Ojai, really specific to Ojai. That would be of great help to the public and to yourselves and to staff, and just answer a lot of questions, like frequently asked questions about historic preservation. And we'd like to do it kind of as a good start of open communication with the public for this journey that we're embarking upon for historic preservation. So that's, those are our requests.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Juline, back to the landmark plaques. The landmark designation you're talking about, is that the one that is the landmark designation that is from the state that gives the tax break to the person who owns the property? Or is this a landmark designation solely for the city of Ojai?
Well, it's kind of a two-part deal, but when something's landmarked, that's landmarked within the city, and then those properties are, if they so choose, they can become Mills Act. But the actual plaque is just for the landmarking. So it's a plaque that goes on the property to say that this is landmarked within the city of Ojai as a historic property.
Do you know the history behind it becoming a zero fee for the applicant?
Well, yes, I do. We discussed that quite a bit in our meetings, and we had several commissioners who felt that asking the public to fund the plaque for their house was onerous, and that it may be a deterrent to getting landmark status. And so we decided by vote that we would like to not impose a fee upon the public.
What does a plaque cost?
I think we've gotten bids back for around $250, $275 per plaque. Is that right? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
$4.50 for a plaque?
So $4.50 for a plaque.
And do you know what the fee was prior to that? The one that we decided to waive?
There was an application fee, I believe. Can you help me out with this, Mr. Malane? I believe it was $1,500 or no? I'm not sure.
That sounds about right. Councilmember Clapp, I think it was somewhere between $1,200 and $1,800 for the preparation of the staff report, bringing the item to the Historic Preservation Commission, and then on to the council. And then we also utilize that money to actually order and post the plaques on the landmark sites.
And do you know what percentage of homes that get the landmark status for the city eventually go on to the Mills Act?
I think it's over half. It's somewhere between 60 and 70%, I believe, something in that nature.
Okay.
My recollection of us waiving that fee is a little different. So I would like to take a look at it. It seemed to me that we were only going to waive the fee for the plaque for those properties that didn't seek Mills Act tax benefits. And I'm pretty sure that's it.
That's kind of my concern.
And if it was, if they weren't going to ask for Mills Act benefits, then there was really no benefit to us or to them to have it landmarked, and it was actually going to cost them $450 or maybe even more. I can't remember at this point. And we said we'd waive the cost of the fee for the plaque. But I don't remember us ever waiving the cost of the fee for those properties that were going to secure Mills Act benefits.
And Mr. Mayor?
Do you remember, Mr. Malane?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So there is an application fee still on the books for Mills Act applicants. So we had two separate fees. We had a fee for landmarking, nominating a property for a landmark status, and then we had a separate application and a separate application fee for Mills Act. Now oftentimes, the two applications would come in simultaneously, and in that case, we did have a billing mechanism, and we still do, to do all the paperwork that we need to do for the Mills Act contracts. But in taking the fee for the landmarking to zero last year as part of the budget, it was explicitly discussed at the Historic Preservation Commission and touched upon briefly at the council that that also, one of the consequences is that we didn't have the, we wouldn't have a source of funds for actually purchasing plaques out of that account. We could still purchase plaques out of the Mills Act account if an applicant went on to do that, but we should probably clarify our fee structure to make that clear.
Yeah, and I think we should.
I think we should, too.
Because my concern, and I think I was even the liaison at the HPC, was that we want, it was to the city's benefit, the landmarks and structures. And it sometimes would cost the applicant, you know, fees, including the cost of the plaque. And we didn't say, well, why would somebody want to do that? And we want to encourage them to do it. But if they were going to do Mills Act, if they were going to get Mills Act benefits, then I didn't see any reason why we should not charge them for the plaque. So even if we were to charge them for the plaque, or not charge them on the initial application, it seems when they come back in, if it's not done at the same time, once they apply for the Mills Act, then we ought to be reimbursed for the cost of the plaque.
Yeah, I think my recommendation would be to have a separate line item for a plaque display or plaque purchase, and then would have a note in our fee schedule that say that that fee would be waived for applicants that do not also go after Mills Act.
Okay, I think that that's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want that clarified. I think we're communicating, but I'm not sure we are. But in the future, if somebody who did not want to do the Mills Act initially comes forward and wants to do the Mills Act, at that point, I think what the mayor is saying, they should be reimburse the city for the initial purchase of the plaque when they were not going to apply for the Mills Act. Is that what we're, are we communicating with that?
That would work as well, but it may be just as easier, clearer for applicants to have a line item on our fee schedule that says historic landmark plaque, $450, and then just a footnote that says that the city will waive that for applicants not pursuing a Mills Act contract.
But when they come in for the Mills Act application, shouldn't there be a line item that says if this property is already a city historic landmark that was, had that fee waived, they will now be charged for that plaque?
I think we could do that administratively if somebody were to decide down the line to pursue a Mills Act.
Because that's a huge tax benefit, and property taxes come back to the city, so we would be losing money ultimately when it became a Mills Act. So at that point, I think it's only appropriate that the property owner pays back for the plaque.
Okay, I think I have good direction for the council. We can make some changes.
All right. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
This technically is not on for a modification of a fee if that's the case that we did waive that. Is this something that has to come back before us, or do you need a consensus of the council? Or can you just include that in your budget if you want to?
On the 25th, in addition to adopting the budget, we'll be adopting the fee schedule so we can put it into the fee schedule that's brought forward on the 25th.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chairwoman Lloyd?
No, but I have a question for Mr. Staff. Are we in any way discriminating by asking fees to be paid for the plaque for businesses or for structures that have the Mills Act but not applying that fee to others?
No, it seems very appropriate, there's a very rational reason, as you discussed, for the distinction.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Blatch, I have a question for staff, just for clarity. So the request here says that it's $1,960 is what they're recommending, but the total says it's $4,360. Is that, so is that just a typo, or is this request?
I think they added up all three of the requests to come to the total of $4,360.
So in our budget, we should add $4,360 or adjust it with the landmark plaques?
Exactly. These three items are not included in the proposed budget, so they would have to be added when we adopt the budget.
Is there any money already in the budget for the Historical Preservation Commission?
Yes, there's a small amount for their staff coverage and for a few items listed on page 131 towards the bottom.
Yeah, just that.
But it's a fairly small amount.
Yeah, okay. So that would just be added, for example, training, education, seminars. The proposed is $440. Out of that, would it be addition of $1,960, or would that $440 be subtracted from the $1,960?
I don't know if the request is in addition to the $440 that's already in the budget, or that's the total request.
I believe it's an addition.
It's an addition.
It is an addition.
Okay, all of those, even printing supplies and all that? Okay.
Any other questions, comments? I did, well, Mayor Protemp Strobel?
I have one question. I sometimes get confused because of the cost allocation, and the cost allocation for the historic preservation, and the bottom section includes $440 for training, education, and seminars. Is that for training, education, seminars specifically for historic preservation commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. So by adding, we're being asked to add another $1,960 to that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be, what, $2,300?
And just looking at the budget, I do want to mention that many of the costs allocated to historic preservation is part of our cost allocation. So it isn't as though the Historic Preservation Commission has $7,000 plus at their disposal.
That's true.
Yeah. And I would think that depending on the council's wishes, we can either add the $440 for the education training to the $1,960 to make it $2,300. But I would think that if we're going to change our fee schedule, we just take the $1,200 for the landmark plaques out and assume that we're going to get them made up by Mills Act. But that's, if we want to throw up the $1,200 in there.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, so there still will be some properties that go forth for landmark designation, but that don't go forth for the Mills Act. And in those cases, we wouldn't have a funding mechanism unless it's a part of the adopted budget. Now realizing that some of those may go into Mills Act, maybe there's an argument that $1,200 is perhaps a little bit high for this budget cycle, maybe you want to look at $800 instead or something like that, but...
I actually think the proper way to do it is to leave this $1,200 number, but to add a revenue number based on an estimate of how many fees would be paid.
Okay.
So that way it'll balance it out a little bit.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions or comments? No? Bill, you'd give, Bill Miley, you had given me a speaker's card. Did you have any specific part of the budget that we're going to be discussing that you wanted to address?
Capital improvement.
Okay. When we get there, I'll call on you. Thank you.
Okay, the second item is the city council had asked that we bring back the cost recovery analysis that had been reviewed with the recreation department. And it's, so I'd refer you to Attachment A. And this is an analysis based on the actuals for fiscal year 2011, 2012, which were the most recent available at the time the analysis was done. And basically, what Susie has done here in the blue lines at the very top has shown how much revenue we received program by program. So, you know, adult softball was $538, aquatics was $10,885, so on and so forth. I'm sorry, I'll wait till you get to the spreadsheet.
It took him a minute to figure it out, but I haven't.
Okay. So it's, if, there's a spreadsheet attached to Attachment A. It's page two of three in Attachment A.
And colors.
And it's got some colored stripes on it. It's in the workshop.
I got you. Okay. Got you. Okay.
Okay, so what Susie was trying to determine is the degree to which the fees that we charge for our recreation programs cover the cost of those programs. So the first area, which is bordered by the blue lines, shows you what the fees are, and each column is a different program. And then, as you get to the backside of the page, there's a roll-up in the yellow column that shows that we generated $408,852 in fees. Then if you go down to the pinkish-purpleish line and the yellow line below that, it subtracts the cost of the program from the fees collected. And as you'll see, some programs do not cover their direct costs, and these are just the direct costs that are being shown. Some break even, and some generate a little bit of a positive amount. And then again, if you flip over to that big yellow column, you'll see that the net result is that we generated $388,741 in direct costs, and therefore, there was a slight profit of about $20,000. So we covered our, all of our direct costs plus about $20,000. Then if you go down to the next section, she has shown what the allocation of administrative costs would be to each of those programs. And we don't cover the administrative costs of the programs. So the bottom line of the analysis was that although you could legally set a fee to cover direct costs, department overhead, and even city overhead, we're only recovering our direct costs. And in looking at the results of our survey of other jurisdictions, that's pretty typical, and in fact, we do a little bit better than average. So we're at the high end of average in terms of our cost recovery. And our analysis is that there's not very much elasticity as far as recreation fees go, which means that the higher you make the rate, the more you push down enrollment. And so even if you were to raise the rates and try and recover more of the cost, chances are you just push down enrollment and wash that out. So that's the analysis that the commission looked at, and I think they felt comfortable that our fee structure with the adjustments that they recommended at the last meeting were appropriate.
Mr. Clark, I had made a suggestion at the last meeting that we not charge the additional fee to people that live outside of Ojai. Is there any way of us telling what the generation of those outside residents are bringing in?
Well, I'm told that on average, about 40% of the attendees are out of the city. So I would say roughly 40% of the fee here is generated by those, so it would be, you know...
Right, but they pay an additional.
Yeah, that would be included in that.
So how would that equate?
I think we'd have to go back and run some numbers to get, I can't do it off the top of my head.
Because the idea would be if we lower the, if we make the outside fee the same as the residence fee, more people would participate, and therefore, there'd be more revenue.
I think we'd need, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we would need an historic analysis to see what the ratio was when, before we... It's on, I'm sorry. I think maybe we would have to do a kind of a historical analysis about what the participation was before the fees were added or increased to see whether there was a direct impact. And it's also hard to say because of the recession. But that being said, when you're supplementing or subsidizing the recreation department, you're taking money out of the general fund, and when you take money out of the general fund, there's less money for other things like paving roads. And the citizens of Ojai are the taxpayers that are subsidizing this. And I think the idea of an outside of the city fee is that that is the participant's contribution to the recreation department to help subsidize that program that they would normally be doing if they were resident of the city. So I think it's highly, you know, completely appropriate to have that fee. And I think maybe this adjustment that they've come up with might be the solution to this because it's that percentage adjustment, which I don't quite understand, and maybe Mr. Clark could explain it, how they've changed it from the flat fee to a percentage?
Yeah, we were charging, and Steve, you'll have to correct me if I get this wrong, we were charging a $10 per registration flat fee regardless of the cost of the class. And what we're doing now is proposing a 5% fee, so it would be a lower fee for a cheaper class and a higher fee for a more expensive class with a $10 limit.
5% of the fee. So 5% of $10, 5% of $20, or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. And we, I mentioned last time that we surveyed some of the other agencies to see what kind of fees they charged. And if I recall right, those fees were in line with those who did charge fees, and there were some who did not charge out-of-area fees. The percentage, yeah, the revised proposal that we brought forward with the percentage was more in line with what other cities do than the old system.
Well, I still think we need to look at it because the bottom line on the cost to the citizens of Ojai is how much we have to subsidize the programs. And if we have, because our fees are higher, that people are utilizing other jurisdictions' recreation programs instead of ours, and if we can increase the usership in Ojai, then ultimately, that will reduce the amount we have to subsidize the programs.
So I think what we'll do is go back and do the best we can to come up with an analysis for you and bring it back at the June 25 meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And maybe go back prior to the recession because a recession has, is going to skew things. So it's probably best to go prior to 2008 to see what historically were, was the participation, it seems, because you really have no idea of knowing from 2008 until present how the recession has impacted enrollment. And because we're coming out of recession, it'd probably be appropriate, I think, to also analyze prior to the recession as well. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
It's a question of how much staff time, et cetera, would be needed to do this in terms of the cost recovery. I do feel parks and recreation are a core value of our city and something we need to supply. If we're covering the cost of the individual program as far as the cost for the teacher and that, then we're doing well. I don't think we'll ever recover costs, nor is it necessarily a goal of mine to recover the cost of parks and rec. It is a core value of our city. I would love if the county would do something to chip in for the 40% or so of residents of the Ojai Valley who are not city residents. That would be very welcome. But I don't know how much staff time we would really want to spend, and how much value would we get out of that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Blatch, I just, just because I had the benefit of being on the Parks and Recreation Commission, I know this was an ongoing dialogue about how do we generate more participation? How do we generate more income? And it was difficult because you're right, it's hard to really analyze with the recession, first of all. Second of all, that recession really impacted our department morale, and it created some friction among competitors for recreation. So I think that the commission, the current commission, is finding creative ways or solutions to generate more participation, and I think this 5% rate increase or fee to outside residents does give them the ability to charge enough, but not, I mean, I hate to say, I don't know if it'll be beneficial for us to really charge them the full amount because we saw that our participation went down. I remember in talking to Rob, to city manager, that our percentage, you used to say 70% of the participants were out of the city limits, and now it's 40%. So it's just a matter of how do we get our participation up? How do we get our revenues up? I think right now, we have a good start, and in the future, I think we should just document everything and start analyzing, seeing if we can make some changes in the future. That would be my approach on it, because I think that there's other priorities right now that the council needs to look at, so.
Well, Mr. Clark, I see nothing wrong if we want to send this idea to the Park and Recreation Commission for their deliberation and ask them what they think, whether, if we made the fee for city residents the same as people outside the city, whether that would increase the number of participants, and if so, would it compensate for the fees that we're giving up? And have them come back with some sort of a, you know, an idea for us?
Okay.
That's fine. Okay. Bill Miley?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Hold on, Bill.
Hold on, Bill.
One second. Mayor Protemp Strobel?
I just had a comment. I've been very vocal about the city of Ojai not being able to supply recreation needs for, quote, "the valley." Now, having admitted that, I have been looking at the programs, the participation in the programs, the individual programs overall have been successful. And we need non-resident participation to keep those programs viable. When we took out the overhead, because we would have to, we would have the overhead whether we had no residents, I mean, whether we had zero non-residents, we would still
still have the overhead. And I think we need the participation from non-residents to make the individual programs viable. And, uh, Mayor Blatz mentioned sending this back to the, uh, the Parks and Rec. I don't agree with that because I think the Parks and Rec went over it with a fine-toothed comb and came up with the percentage with a ten, ten dollar cap.
Okay. And if the councils-
Clear some.
If, uh, if the council's pleasure is to stay with that, that's fine with me, too. Mr. Miley, did you have something to?
I'm Bill Miley, Signal Street. I'm looking at Ms. Muir's, um, spreadsheet. And I see two, uh, activities, recreation department activities that generate, one generates a lot of income, which is the column, Recreation Classes Other, and it generates forty-one thousand four hundred and three dollars for the year eleven twelve. On the spreadsheet, on the fiscal spreadsheet, this one right here. The colored one.
What column are you talking about?
It's over on the right-hand side, and it's called Recreation Classes Other. It's right next to tennis.
Four thousand.
Right here.
There's a deficit of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I'd be interested in knowing what kind of classes those were, uh, whether they were for youth or whether they were for adults. I think that's really important because the, uh, youth activities, uh, most of them are, some of them generate deficits, but they're really important, so we can pass on that. The other activity that I think ought to be looked at is the, is the number one column, which is Adult Softball. And there are a lot of very active adults who play softball and travel to different regional areas. Their income was five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and there was a loss of five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven. I'd be interested in knowing how much they pay, how many people are involved. And I would, the adults I know who play softball, um, um, could well afford probably more than that. I would think you could zero that one out. And once we know more about the recreation classes, if they were for prominently adults, I think we should try to zero that one out, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ms. Muirs?
Yes.
The Recreation Classes Other, can you explain what's included in that?
Yes. Those are... Well, I don't have a, oh.
I don't have detail, uh, activities in, that's included in that other classes. I could provide it later time.
Okay. And then can, do you have the record of how many participants we have in adult softball? Or what the fee is? Because we could tell, if we're bringing in five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, we can divide that by the number of participants to see what we're charging.
Well, I don't have that information either off my head, so I have to look into it and get it.
Okay. Steve, do you happen to know?
I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that there's been a, a lot of change in the softball program from the eleven twelve to what we did last year, to what we're proposing for next year. I don't have those numbers in front of me. In fact, I can go grab them. But I can tell you that for thirteen fourteen, we're, we're looking at breaking even, well, we're, we've got a, a reasonable amount of revenue and a reasonable amount of expenditure coming, coming into that, that at least lines up with some of the other programs. We're not looking at a five thousand dollar loss in, in, uh, adult softball. If that was the case, we would no longer be proposing to go forward with the program. But there's been a lot of change in that, and there's been increased participation. And it's something we're continuing to work on. But I can get the numbers.
And, and did that, does that have something to do with the fact that there was a, there was a subcontractor providing softball?
That may have had something to do with it. I know in the last year, we've made some success in trying to, to get that going. And I know it's something that Matt and the crew are working really hard on right now to try and get that going. In fact, we've got some other ideas on, on how we can try to prime the pump a little bit. In fact, we've been talking about maybe even trying to put together and host a free adult softball tournament on the weekend, just to get folks back out. But, um, we're not looking at the, at the numbers that are proposed in eleven twelve, either for this current fiscal year or for the coming fiscal year.
Right.
But I don't have those right in front of me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, do the, any council members have a question of Suzy or?
I have a question, I have a comment.
I'll go, I have a comment, too. Um, I was just going to mention that as far as the recreation programs go, we've had a lot of changes. And we've had changes in staff, and we've had changes in the way we do business. And so, I think I'd like to see it given a little more time to see how it's going to level out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree. I would like to go ahead with the Recreation, Park and Recreation Commission recommendations and, and just see what happens.
Okay.
That's what I would like, I think would be best.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd agree with-
Yes.
I agree with-
All right. As do I. All right, Mr. Clark, next.
Okay, so now, we're going to segue into Public Works, which has a number of different sections. And it starts on page, uh, one forty-three of your budget document. And Mr. Grant will be walking you through that.
Hello, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor.
Nice to see you.
Good to see everybody. Uh, well, as far as Public Works go, yeah, it was page one forty of the budget book. And, uh, budget, the Public Works is a, the budget's relatively consistent. We're trying to do more with less as far as, uh, we keep on grabbing more responsibilities, but we're keeping the budget relatively flat. So, uh, as a reminder, uh, what, what does Public Works do? Well, we're doing the street maintenance, the signs, the striping, the potholes, the cracked ceiling of our streets and our storm drain, clearing them right now for the fire preparations, so on. The citywide light landscaping, the tree maintenance, uh, all the facilities that the city owns, which include, uh, the city hall, the museum, the, the Y facilities, the Maricopa Median, the Libby Bowl, and Boyd Center, Martin Gym, Libby Park, Sarzati Park, Skateboard Park, Rotary Park, Clef Vista Park, Daily Park, and on and on. And, and also, the exteriors of the police department, and I should say, the exterior of the museum. We don't do the interior. And, uh, so our crews stays pretty busy doing that, so we're holding that, uh, budget level. For instance, at the museum, I know they had a volunteer that was just doing all the landscaping, but that person just left a couple of months ago. So, the city's now taking over the landscaping there. We've also upped our maintenance commitments at the Clef Vista Park, you know, to make sure that we keep up with all the, it's, it's native plants, but even native plants require landscaping, so we're staying on top of that as well. Uh, so in, in the budget book, we, the next paragraph is about transportation and trolley, which is a, a separate item on the agenda here. And the assessment districts, we're not covering tonight because they are separate items that come forth with a budget and are addressed at that time. Uh, under Program and Project Management, probably a few things worthy of mention that are coming up in this fiscal year are under AB 939, which is the Solid Waste Programs. And we have a new Assembly Bill, uh, three forty-one, which is, uh, has a seventy-five percent goal for recycling statewide by the year two thousand twenty. So, it has some mandatory recycling required of commercial and multi-dwelling units that we have to track more carefully and report more carefully to the, to the state. And we have to promote education and better recycling for them. We also have the franchise agreement for EJ Harrison is coming up for renewal. That's a ten-year agreement. And, uh, that'll be expiring in July of two thousand fourteen, so we'll begin negotiating that this year. Under the MPDS programs, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems, the, uh, there's been, is probably a lot of you have heard, is a TMDL, a Total Maximum Daily Loading Regulation, that came out from the Regional Water Board, which regulates algae nutrients going into the stream. So, that was just passed, uh, several months ago. And, uh, it's in its initial stages, stages of being approved by the state. Should be a, very soon that we'll kick off a one-year timer, and we'll have to have a monitoring and implementation plan developed this year. And then we have ten years to comply with mandates in that specific TMDL for the San Antonio River, which is what applies to us. It also applies to the Ventura River, but we don't have runoff going directly into that river. So, we have a lot of conditions to deal with there. The EPA just issued a, a pumping TMDL, and, uh, that one hasn't been fully accepted yet, but, uh, they're pushing that one, uh, I guess you might say, down our, the regulatory system, the pipeline. It's a way to put it, uh, and, uh, so that'd be water pumping TMDLs, and that's going to be the, uh, potential overdraw of the aquifer up in the Ventura watershed. And there'll be, that one doesn't make a lot of sense right now, the way it's been written. They basically took a copy of the LG TMDL, and they put the pumping TMDL title on it, so it's being worked out. But they met a regulatory deadline. Now, the draft has to be revised to meet the requirements. So, staff will be working on that quite a bit. And, uh, under FEMA and flood programs, uh, staff is working on the, the draft map was just released for the east, east Ojai Valley, uh, Luvial Fan Study they just completed. And that, uh, was a major update related to two thousand five flooding. It had substantially higher flooding in, in two thousand five than they never seen even nineteen sixty-nine. So, they revised all the flooding, and it did, it, uh, it revised the hundred-year flood plane out there and the national flood maps for that area. And, uh, pulled a lot of people in the county out of the flood zone, and it looks like a small portion. We just got the draft map, we're taking a look at it. Looks like maybe a, a dozen, uh, properties within the city of Ojai may have been brought into the flood zone. But it's a flood zone X, which, uh, which appears to be that, uh, it, the feds don't require insurance on it, but, uh, some insurance companies may. So, it's relatively good news. It could have been a lot worse on that. And, uh, so we'll be working on that, uh, putting out, getting a public meeting going, working with on that. And I should mention that the flood maps for the whole Ventura River are being revised also as part of our, uh, work that we're doing over the next, uh, they've been saying next year for a lot of years, but the flood maps are all caught up in the, uh, the levee revisions. There's a lot of levees across the United States that are not meeting Army Corps of Engineers requirements. So, uh, the, you, you can't count a, a levee on a map as a full levee for flood control unless it's been certified by the, by the feds, by the, by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, that means, uh, it's hung up in, in various battles and draft revisions for a couple more years, I think. We'll see on that. And, uh, I should mention, it looks, it seems like an uptick in the Community Development Department as far as submittals, and our staff supports that with, uh, reviews of those projects for, uh, Public Works-related issues and drainage. And, uh, we also handle the, the infrastructure for the computer and communications, the PEG TV, uh, that we're using tonight, and the computers and phones within the city. And, uh, we've just installed some police department cameras for them, so we're handling all that as well. And, uh, I'll cover the Nordhoff Cemetery in a minute. And then as far as fleet maintenance, of course, we have our, the city's fleet. We have one mechanic that handles the five trolleys, the vans, the, the fleet of seventeen trucks, and loader backhoe, and so on, and different equipment. We have some bucket trucks for maintenance. So, as far as that Public Works, I guess, without going into detail, it's relatively consistent with the previous years unless there's any specific questions.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions of Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I have a-
Councilwoman Clapp?
Yeah. Um, just about the commuter, computer and communications, it just brought to my mind that a while back, Councilwoman Smith requested that we get a report on PEG and the school and what they've been doing. And I don't think we ever got that, did we? So, it would be really nice to get that. And when does that, does that agreement get renewed?
Um, I don't remember the exact, uh, finish date. We did, um, enter into a modification with them a couple of months ago to return some of the money to the city to, uh, purchase equipment for the, um, facility, equipment here.
I think it would be good to have a report on that.
But we can, we can update you when we, when we have the, when we have them come.
Cause I haven't seen much change on Channel Ten, so it'd be nice to know where the money's going.
Okay.
And the other question is, um, on Nordhoff Cemetery, I know it, there was some mention of optimizing the space with, um-
I, that-
Erdens instead or something. Where's that at?
Um, we, we've proposed adding ten thousand dollars to the cemetery budget-
Right.
-to get an architect that's familiar with cemetery design to come in and advise us about the possibility of what I would call a niche wall-
Mm-hmm.
-and, or a series of niche walls. But basically, um, I've used this in, in another city, in their cemetery. It's a very economical thing space-wise in terms of how much area it takes up and holds a lot of, of niches for, for remains because it's vertical. So, we were thinking that that might be a way of generating money for the cemetery and that the architect could also generate some fairly general ideas about what we need to do to improve the look of the place. Cause as you know, it's-
Yeah. And I would assume that whatever they come up with would pay us back more than ten thousand dollars.
I would certainly hope so.
Okay. So, you, it, so that is in the budget, yeah?
It is.
So, okay.
Okay. Are we taking the transportation and the cemetery along with Public Works? Are we lumping those together?
Well, um, I thought we'd ta, do them separately. We do have an attachment on transportation to go through.
I saw that, okay. It's just the questions were kind of all of, yep.
Um, Mr. Grant, over the years, we've been asking, bit by bit, we've been asking our, uh, staff to do more and more with the same amount. How are they doing?
I guess, uh, I won't bother answering that, but hopefully, the, it seems like we've had pretty good feedback from the community that we're catching up with some of these things that have been, uh, not maintained in the past.
Well, I know, I know they've been doing an incredible job. What I'm concerned about is that, that at some point, we will be asking our sta, staff to produce more work than they're physically capable of, capable of doing. I'd like to make sure that we're, we're taking a look at that, and so that if they need additional staff, we know about it before there's a crisis.
I appreciate that, and I'll, I'll make sure that I address that with my, uh, my, my supervisor, Mr. Clark. So, I, I understand at this time. Uh, and I, I think it's a great approach that, uh, the council and the city manager have come up with, which is to keep the operational costs as tight as we can and try to take the capital costs. And I think we've got a great, we're going to cover it in a minute here, the capital improvement program, so we have two million dollars proposed this year. So, I think it's great to, uh, a lot, a lot of our capital improvement program is really substantial maintenance on our existing facilities. So, it's going to lighten the load a little bit on our staff in that, uh, instead of us trying to run around and keep up with this maintenance, they're gonna, there'll be some contractors coming in to really knock out really neglected maintenance. And it really lightens the load eventually with our staff that they don't have to keep, uh, chasing broken-down items.
Yeah. Any other questions specifically on Public Works for Mr. Grant? Comments? No?
You're doing a great job.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. Let's move on to transportation. That's attachment B.
Yeah, attachment B. And as Greg will explain, this has been quite a moving target this year.
Yes.
Right. Well, uh, I, I guess, first of all, I'd like to say that the good news is the fund is balanced. I think that's great news that, uh, the city council requested, and, uh, city manager pulled together a group, uh, the Transit Committee back about a, a year plus ago. And it had recommendations that were eliminating the Gold Coast route into downtown. And the, and the county came to save the day on that one and paid for the funding on that. So, it was substantial savings to the Transit Fund. We also modified the, uh, it's part of that agreement, we increased the evening hours for, for fifty thousand dollars, but we're able to get a, a three-year grant for that. And that one was part of the trials and tribulations we just went through. We were just notified that, uh, through MAP twenty-one, the new transportation bill, that the, uh, C, the CMAC grants will no longer cover operational, so we're going to lose the fifty thousand. So, we went through an ordeal, and we were waiting for some final, uh, notices from the feds on that. And they landed up and turned the position around on it, and they just said, okay, they will fund it. So, we just got good news, uh, just a couple of days ago, that basically said that they will maintain that fifty thousand dollar funding for three years. It kind of is a testing demonstration program for three years, they'll fund it. So, we've got, uh, good funding on that. Uh, we also modified the weekend hours. You might recall, we went from half hour to one-hour frequency on weekends and increased our fares. So, all that's worked out, that we've, uh, we're doing really well in transit as far as our fund goes. We've got, uh, an estimated over one hundred thousand dollar surplus for this fiscal year that we're in right now. So, we're doing terrific.
That's great.
And so, all that's come around well. We've, uh, there is a sheet, uh, it's in the budget package right after the Recreation Department, uh, the nice colorful fold-out. The, uh, next page, uh, shows the estimated, the budgeted and the revised, uh, with end-of-year predictions. So, you can see the, uh, the budget started at thirty-seven thousand, and after the revenue and expenditures anticipated, we expected to be at a hundred thousand. And so, we're, we're in the ballpark. We thought we were going to lose, you'll see under the CMAC grant, we thought we were going to lose the fifty thousand dollar grant, but that's back in. $50,000 grant, but that's back in. So now you can see with the $50,000 grant from CMAC for the extended hours to match Gold Coast Transit. And we've got a few other items of interest in there. The Ojai Valley Inn, you'll recall, we started the route out to there last August. We also have the Lake Casitas route going this summer, but that's fully reimbursed. So the $9,000-plus expenditures is being fully reimbursed there. And we have a security system grant that's being funded, was a grant we secured also, to put cameras on the trolleys as well as in the yard for security. And, but those are all balanced directly by expenditures versus revenue. And so we're still at about $100,000 plus for the anticipated surplus at the end of this year. So I think that's, it's all good news. And I should mention as well, we have not been putting any money in the Equipment Replacement Fund for a long time. And this year's expenditures include a minimal $15,000 for equipment replacement, but obviously the full surplus could be moved towards that equipment replacement in the future. And that's good news, because I know in the past, these trolleys were pretty beat up and took a lot of chasing around to keep them on the road. So we have the two new trolleys doing great, and the air conditioning works a lot better in those than the older ones. And it looks like we're gonna, if things keep moving along as they do, but this, the grants for transportation just seem to shift constantly. It's very hard to anticipate exactly where this goes, not to mention the shifts related to Gold Coast Transit district forming and so on.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Mr. Grant on transportation or comments?
I do have one question. Mr. Grant, do you have, have you had any feedback on the ridership for the trolley out to Lake Casitas?
Unfortunately, I think they did update me on that, yes. There was, at this point, we have not had great ridership on that. And we, in initial discussions, agreements with Casitas Municipal Water District, the marketing is the responsibility for that, even though as part of ours, us having a fixed route, we had to advertise it and set up brochures, and we did. But at this point, Casitas has agreed to assure that each one of the campers receives a brochure. I think somehow that slipped last weekend, but they need to make sure, as part of the marketing program, that all the campers are aware of it.
Mr. Mayor.
So it's increased slightly, but it's nowhere's near what it needs to be to probably be continued next year.
Councilwoman Clapp?
Is there any sort of advertising of it in the recreation brochure?
I'm sorry, setup in the
The, the access to the trolley, is that being advertised in the rec brochure? Maybe that would be a good idea, too.
I don't think it was, because it was really agreed to and pushed forward after the brochure was already gone to press.
After it was printed, yeah. Because it's also not the summer, it's not hot yet. But the school maybe should be, I mean, I know it's their responsibility, but just some ideas, is that there's other avenues of getting it out there, and it would be through the schools and through the Recreation Department to let people know that they can get out there, particularly in the summer months for the kids.
So we're trying to assist in that right now, but
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the schools, most schools end tomorrow, I think.
Yeah.
So it's a bit tight there.
But maybe the Recreation Department.
But we'll try to make sure we're doing the best we can on our trolleys, as well as the campers, I think, are the key part.
I'm sure you are. I have no doubt in my mind.
And I think, isn't it that the lake charges for cars to enter, but not people?
That's correct. So if you take
So, so if you take the trolley out there, there's no charge to get into the lake. If you take your car there, you have to pay.
Right. It's a great way to go there and save the fee, to, for the entry fee.
Yeah, and the water park, I would
Right.
would be a real draw. What is the age for the water park, or is there a height restriction or anything? I mean, can 12-year-olds go into the water park without an adult?
I think when Carol Belzler was here, she, I believe that came up, and it was 12-years-old.
It's 12, that's what I remembered. Okay.
Yeah, I believe it was.
Any questions on, further comments on transportation?
Just a comment again on the, the Casitas water park. I have gone on their website, and they have a lot of really good information, so I would encourage any of our citizens who are interested to go on their water, their website.
All right, let's move on to cemetery.
Well, I think that Rob pretty well covered the cemetery at this point, but I think in general, I should mention that as a recap to the cemetery, it's probably not one of our proudest accomplishments out there, but we can thank there was volunteer Rick Bisaccia that redid the sign out there last year, and it looks great. And there's been some volunteers out there cleaning up a bit, but we're going to re-energize our efforts to try to clean up the landscaping and so on out there, and work with a consultant, as Rob mentioned, for $10,000 budgeted to come up with a master plan, a long-term plan for the cemetery. At this point, all of the full burial sites are sold out at the cemetery. As they always say, people are dying to get in there, so that they, you gotta throw that in there, right? So they, we sold out a long time ago with those. But the urn sites, we still have 125 urn sites available. And so at this time, there's still potential revenues from the urns, urn site sales. And then this master plan, you know, there's that property, the parcel is out in front of the cemetery as well. There might be some potential out there to expand a wall and put additional either urn or burial sites out there. And maybe, most of these people who are, who handle these master plans are landscape architects as their background. So it's kind of perfect that we can look at better planning out there that would be low maintenance and low water use, and try to make it a bit better appearance.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the cemetery? Mayor Protem Strobel?
On the, the road part of the cemetery, is it Del Norte, where the city owns a large piece, there was a smaller piece that the city does not own. And we were, we had talked about contacting the owner to see if they would be willing to donate that to the city so we could expand. Have we done anything?
No, we haven't. But I will get that back in our list, yeah. I know we had the, the major parcel was donated, but yeah, that smaller portion, we'll get that on our list, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Grant? No? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on to deferred revenue. Attachment C, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. There's about $600,000 in various fees that have been paid to the city for very specific purposes, that shows up in our annual audit as kind of a lump sum, but doesn't show up, or hasn't showed up in the past in any detailed way in the budget. And so Attachment C is a new schedule that we will put in the budget this year, and will continue to put in the budget in the future, just to make sure that the council's aware that these funds are there and available for the various purposes to which they've been provided to us. My main comment is that Mr. Grant has been going through these revenue areas in detail to try and determine the extent to which they can be used. And we have in the past proposed using some of these, and will continue for our capital improvement plan and for other expenditures of the city. So the primary point of this really is just to let you know that that money is there, and to share with you in a little bit more detail what it is. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Clark? Councilwoman Clapp?
Well, my, I immediately went to traffic signal, $37,800. I'm assuming that that wouldn't be able to be done on the state highway? I mean, we wouldn't be able to use that money on the state highway?
Well, sometimes we have to cost-share on the state highway, so that, I'm not sure that's necessarily true.
Oh, okay. Well, because the reason that I, that draws my attention is because for the longest, back when Andy Belknap was still here, he and I were working on, just before he left, a project of putting a left-turn signal in its signal. And it had gotten approval from Caltrans, and then he'd left, and it fell through the cracks. So it was something that, that we investigated and pretty much discovered it would have been a great way to take some of the strain off of Ojai Avenue. So it's just something I wanted to throw out there.
Just, just so you're aware, we have been pursuing that with Caltrans, to find out whether there are warrants for them to do it, or if not, what the cost would be to do it. And, and one of the prob, one of the pretty serious problems we're having right now is that they closed the Ventura office of Caltrans and consolidated it with the LA office. And that office is much more difficult to work with than the Ventura office had been. It's, you know, it's just, it's very big and very bureaucratic and all that. But we, Mr. Grant has asked several times, reminded them that we have that request there.
Okay. Any other questions on the deferred revenues?
Just a question back to the signal and working with Caltrans, et cetera. Oh, and I think Councilmember Clapp is our representative. Any way that we could get VCTC to give us a hand? Because they have a Caltrans representative that attends every meeting, and so maybe if we brought it up at VCTC meetings, or our representative brought it up at VCTC.
I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then that might give us a little more
Good idea. Yeah, I will do that.
Any other questions or comments? No? For those of you that are here for the city council meeting that was due to start one minute ago, we are participating in a budget workshop. The council's convened this special meeting at 6:00, and we're going to go through the capital improvement, so we can get through it this evening. So if you'll just bear with us, we'll get started on the regular meeting in just a few minutes. Mr. Clark, let's move on to capital improvement fund.
Okay, and I would refer you to attachment D, which is the updated version of the capital improvement plan, and Mr. Grant will be walking you through that.
Good evening, mayor and council again. And, yeah, and I'll try to move through this quickly, and keep in mind, everybody's here for the main meeting. So if we all start off in the budget booklet, on page 2 of 8, it's got the capital improvement program, the spreadsheet that's there. And that's, there's a more detailed spreadsheet available, which breaks out the amount of money from Fund 31, the capital improvement project fund, versus the various grants that we have supplemented here. But I'll try to briefly recap those as we go through them. The primary focus of our capital improvement program was to try to bring our streets up to a reasonable level, the often called the pavement condition index. And so the first section is for the road overlays and reconstruction. So you see under fiscal year 1213, we just finished Oak and El Paso, so that was just kind of a minor start to our program. And then you move onward to fiscal year 1314, and Pleasant, Bristol, Summer, Aliso, Fox are all collector's streets. And we obtained last year a STP, a Surface Transportation Fund grant for the $400,000 to cover the majority of that. We have a minor match of 11%. But the overlay will be covered by a federal grant for that. And then we've got the residential streets for Fox on the south end, from Willow down to the Athletic Club is residential, non-collector, it's not eligible for federal funding. Sunny, Oriole, Del Oro Drive, just the, kind of the, I should say, the southeastern quadrant, when you look at a map from 6 to 9, I guess, or so on the map, we're going to cover that part of it. It's a major driven section, the worst-conditioned section. Anita Avenue, Mountain View Avenue, and Tico Road are all under proposal to be overlaid this year. And then you can see our program, we increased the amount of funding for each of the upcoming years in the capital improvement program. And I should mention that a primary part of our program is we're going to initiate the, there's a pavement management system, which every few years, you go out and check the condition of each one of the roadways, and it helps prioritize what roads should be overlaid first. It hasn't been kept up for a number of years, since back around 2006. So we're going to update the pavement management system this year, so we'll have a more objective prioritization of what roadways are in the worst condition. I think our priorities are primarily set right now on how much time our crews spend filling potholes out there. So right now, these are, I think, most people would agree, these are some of the worst-conditioned streets in the city that have a reasonable amount of traffic on them. And when you move down to parks, we're proposing, one of the funds that the city manager just mentioned is a AB 939 fund, and recycled plastic and other products are eligible to be used for this. So we're proposing $50,000 worth of replacement of picnic tables, benches, and trash cans with recycled plastic cans. And so that'll be an appearance improvement for the parks and throughout the city, wherever you see the existing plastic cans we have. And then also within parks, underneath Libby Park, where, I guess we've been talking about a little bit, there's a fountain rework. We've had trouble scheduling that in because there's so many activities. We keep getting reservations for the use of the area, and it's hard to squeeze it in up there. And so we're planning to have that done in the next couple of months. We'll pull out the exterior of the fountain and put in the new tile that was donated by RTK Tile, and also rework that corner bench that was planned right now. The fountain area, all of the 2x4s in between, all of the concrete out there are kind of a developing trip hazard, so we're going to rework all that as well. We're looking at remodeling the Libby restrooms for $120,000. That's an assumption that we're, we're hoping that the Ojai Civic Association might be generous enough to contribute money towards that. There's a new playground proposed at Libby Park as well. The intention there was that the Rotary Club is planning a shade structure over the playground, and we hate to put a play, you know, custom build a shade structure for a playground that should be replaced within a couple of years. So we thought we should move ahead and get the, they're still having a little funding situation. I think they're still roughly a year out before they put that shade structure in. So we'll get the new playground built in the meantime. And so that $240,000, again, is in hopes that we'll have Ojai Civic Association help us out with the construction of that. And the playground shade is all by the Rotary Club for $60,000. On the next page, there's the Boyd Center at the top of the page. We, the whole Boyd Center is in some general disrepair, so even the exterior, you'll see all kinds of rotten, rotting wood on the exterior, and a lot of the door thresholds are rotten. So we plan to replace all that. There's a multipurpose room doors in shambles, we're going to replace that. The front office is not compliant with ADA standards, so it's a full remodel of that front office area. There's an art room, which is, it's just, it needs to be remodeled and have sound insulation put into the room, so it doesn't echo so bad. Most people complain that it's not comfortable to have the loud classes in there. And then there's some drainage issues in the rear staircases. At Sarzati Park additionally, and primarily through use of the CDBG funding, and again, in hopes that the Ojai Civic Association would help with this, would be the barbecue area where all the picnic tables are in the back, near the new restroom. We're looking at putting a canopy over that area, so it can be used, a lot like you see at Soul Park. They have these large wooden canopies. And I think everybody agrees that'd be a great way to be able to use the barbecue area better throughout the summer and even the winter periods, for shade and for protection from the rains. And that includes a trash enclosure for the barbecue and the restroom area. And then further down, there's the, under streets, we're dedicating monies to some crack-filling work and trip hazard removal on sidewalks. And our ADA plan is out of date, so we need to develop, have the plan developed period, and also get out to some of the curb and sidewalk transitions at the corners and put in proper ADA transitions. Down below, complete streets, we have TDA Article III. We've just received a grant to upgrade all the bike crossings throughout the city. So there are approximately 12 bike crossings, and each one of those, we'll take a look at the, to improve the visual safety, so the bikers can see the cars and cars see the bikers, the signage to make it more consistent, to put wayfinding out there, so you've got street signs, so people know what street they're at when they're on the bike path. So we've received a $50,000 grant just recently for that through TDA. And then we had a grant from last year, which was to improve the bike, excuse me, the pedestrian crossing on the north, on the south side of the Farmer's Market on Matilla House Street. Take that crossing and improve it, and take, on the north side of Farmer's Market, where it crosses Aliso Street, at Lion Street, there's a lot of concerns about the safety of that crossing for people leaving the Farmer's Market. So we have the funding available now to go ahead and put a pedestrian crosswalk there with curb extensions and so on, to make that a safer crossing. That'll also study quite a few of the existing crosswalks on Ojai Avenue to try to improve the safety of those as well. That's a study for, only for the Ojai Avenue, there's no improvements involved. And there's additional bike trail signage on the bike path to, for wayfinding in general. Where's the City Hall? Where's the Libby Park and that kind of thing? It was previously requested, and we've been waiting actually for those signs to be delivered. It appears it might be after July 1st at this rate. And related to complete streets, again, there's, right in front of Jersey Mike's, there's a pedestrian crosswalk there in front of the Chaparral School. And it's, I believe there was, I understand there was one time, there was an overhead light there at that crosswalk, and there is no longer one. So we're looking at installing a light, there's a half a wooden pole you see there, it was removed through, from the undergrounding as part of the Los Arboles project. So we'll have a street light put in there, and we'll improve that ADA ramp on there. Right now, it's a solid curb at the end of that crosswalk. And also, we have a complete street demonstration at the Ventura Street Library that was proposed. We're looking at the feasibility of that right now. There is share-o and bike lane improvements on Grand Avenue. There is a curb extension proposed on El Paso at Ojai Avenue. A lot of pedestrians complain that when you're trying to cross El Paso, you're looking, that's where Ojai Avenue makes the angle. And when you see cars coming, you can't tell if they're going to turn or go straight, so everybody keeps hesitating to make it across there. So we're proposing to improve the pedestrian crosswalk there through a few measures. And also, we're proposing to put a bike bridge at the measures. And also, we're proposing to put a bike bridge at the Fox Canyon Branca, so that would be at the end of Fox Street where it hits the Athletic Club. The bike trail right now shifts over onto the Equestrian Path Bridge and comes back over, and it's a bit of a safety hazard. So we've managed to transfer an existing fund that wasn't being used under C-MAC over for a bridge, and it should be built this year. And then as a final complete streets project, there's rapid flash beacons are kind of the newest trend in pedestrian crosswalks, so they're these high-intensity LED lights that flash, excuse me, when you, when you hit the crosswalk button. You'll see quite a few of them down in Ventura Avenue. They've started to put them in. And the in-street pavement lighting that we have is extremely expensive to maintain. It's, every year, we're spending $5,000 to $6,000 maintaining those lights. They're ridiculously expensive and difficult to get to. So people have pretty, most people are giving up on in-pavement lighting and going to this type of lighting. We're gonna hit a couple parking lots for slurry and renovation. The first one will be next to Libby Park at Los Caporales Restaurant. The other one would be at the Rainbow Bridge Parking Lot at Signal Matilha. And under facilities, we're looking at the plaza improvements, approximately $40,000 in general improvements, upgrading the restrooms, the arcade, benches, lighting, everything throughout the plaza area and the front arcade area to improve that area. At the museum, there was some general deterioration of the stucco on the outside and some water getting into the framing, and leaks in the roofing. And there was general termite and wood repair required there, so we have $25,000 committed for fixing that up. As previously mentioned, the cemetery master plan is in there for $10,000. And then there are some drainage improvements, which were low points, were puddling water at a few different locations noted there, just installing catch basins to improve that. And final page would be the onboard camera system for the trolleys and the security in the yard. That was a grant that we obtained for $25,000. And then radios for all the trolleys that are using phones right now. So our grant total, $2,095,000, and we hope we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any questions by the council of Mr. Grant or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I just wanted to comment that Mr. Grant and the Public Works Department has, have just been doing an incredible job. I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Anyone else with a comment? Yes, Mr. Clark?
I'd just like to say that this $2 million program is really a big deal for this community. For, for many, many years, we have not adequately funded our capital improvements and our infrastructure. And we're, we've got about a 10-year backlog of, of stuff to do, but the council has given infrastructure-first priority. And when we made this budget, we funded infrastructure first and then did what we could with what was left. And I think that it'll take a little time for people to be able to notice, but I think after we have done this for a number of years, there will be a definite improvement in the appearance of our community and will be a well-maintained community at some point.
Thank you. Mr. Miley, you had a comment?
Bill Miley, Signal Street. I want to just comment about the road overlay and reconstruction budget. Looks really great. However, one of my favorite streets is not on it, which is North Signal Street, North and Grand. I did talk to Mr. Grant today and understand the priorities, and I accept them. But there are, as you go beyond the three years, there's no budgeted items for particular streets, it's blank. And I know you're gonna be do, we're gonna be doing 24 budgeted streets in three years. So I would like to suggest that you folks, in the back of your mind, keep Signal Street ready to be prioritized as, in the lower end of Signal Street right now, just North and Grand is kind of, we have a zoo out there, we kind of have alligator, alligator pavement. And Mr. Grant and I talked about, he raised the issue, actually, it was a really good one. He said if, Bill, he said if you pave the road, people are gonna drive faster. And rapid transit on North Signal Street is an ongoing problem. People seem to like to roar up the hill, and when they get up to the top of the hill, they're coming back to kind of come along, and then they just sort of release the brake and they come down. So some of us had wanted road bumps, but the fire department said, no, that's not a good idea. Police department said people are gonna lose control. So there may be some safety issues that Mr. Grant and, and others can come up with, which we would certainly support, I would support. So just remember North Signal Street, because it's gonna be a lot more busy with the Fox Canyon Trail opening and the Valley View Preserve being open to people for recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Comments by council? Councilwoman Spent, or Clapp?
This has nothing to do with money, but you know what? That's a really good point with the Valley View Preserve. That is, that street's a drag strip. So I think it is a safety issue that we really do need to look into and figure out how to slow people down on that street. It's just not right that those residents have to put up with that.
Mayor Proton Strobel?
Perhaps Mr. Grant can answer this. I just like to dump everything I can on Mr. Grant. But it seems to me we have a list of the streets in Ojai and their condition. And I, if I were to say Mr. Miley could contact Mr. Grant and take a look at that list to see where Signal Street resides, would I be misleading him? Yes?
Not entirely. I think that's one I mentioned briefly, but I was trying to move quickly there, is that we had a pavement management system, and that's exactly the intention of that, is to take out the subjectivity for the streets. So it hasn't been updated since 2005 or '06. So that's part of what was in the budget, was to update the pavement management system. So that'd be a nice subjective update, and it'll take the priority. So you see, in the future years, we don't have those streets committed until we get the input from that system.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Alright, I'm gonna adjourn the special meeting of the Ojai City Council, and we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll start the regular meeting.